I'd like to call to order the Wilson County County Commission meeting of May 17th, 2021. We welcome all of our guests here tonight and invite you to come back any opportunity that you might have. This time, I'd like to introduce Commissioner Jerry McFarland for our prayer and pledge.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, of the commission, ladies and gentlemen that's here visiting, I'd like to call on my friend Todd Elliott to come forward. Todd is the minister at the Fellowship Church. He's also a Century 21 Realtor, and he's always trying to buy and sell, if you will. But Todd's been my minister for a number of years, and I ask him to come and lead us in prayer, and I'll do the pledge. Todd, please rise.
Let's pray together if we can. Father, we thank you so much for the blessings of this day. We thank you for the time that we have to be together tonight, and we thank you for the county that we call home, and we're thankful for the many ways that you continue to bless us. We're thankful for the men and women in this room that lead us and make decisions that affect our county. We're thankful for their service. God, there are times that they're in a difficult place because the decisions they make may not always be popular. We just pray that you'll help us to never lose sight of the ways that you continue to bless us, and we live in a great county, and we just thank you for that. God, we thank you for, we just thank you for our children. We thank you for our schools. We thank you for the people that serve us, to protect us as police officers, those that keep our roads in good condition, all the people, the paramedics, everybody that just works hard to make this county what it is. And we just thank you for them, and we thank you for blessing us, and it's through Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Todd. Appreciate it, sir. If you join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag, which is our most sacred piece of cloth.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland, and thank you, Pastor, for being here tonight. You will now press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Like we have a full house. Mr. Robinson? Twenty-five and oh, everyone is present. Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Patton.
Steering committee meant on May the sixth, Thursday evening, in the courthouse, minutes are in your packet. Motion to be received is filed.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Adoption of the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? See you none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? And the consent agenda, Commissioner Patton?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion on it? Three items there. See you none, all in favor, say aye.
One's got money.
Don't mess me up. Number three. So we'll need to vote. So if you are ready to vote on the consent agenda, please cast your vote. Mr. Gitter? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record. Twenty-five and oh, consent agenda passes. This time, we'll move forward with special recognition, and I'll introduce Commissioner Bobby Franklin.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to honor one of my constituents that passed the first of this year. I'd like to bring up Captain Scott Moore and the Breedwell family. Could you please come forward? Scott, would you be kind enough to read this resolution into the record?
May have to adjust this microphone a little bit. It's an honor to be able to present this resolution to the Breedwell family. I had the honor and privilege of knowing Mr. Breedwell for many years since 2001, where I met Susie, and we worked together. We were neighbors. We went on trips together. So I appreciate Mr. Franklin. I know Sergeant Corey Buehler had a lot to do with it, too, and so I'm very honored to be able to do this. Resolution number 21-5-4, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, in memory of Don Eugene Breedwell for his service to Wilson County, Tennessee. Whereas Don Eugene Breedwell was a citizen and resident of Wilson County, Tennessee, when he passed away on January 8th, 2021, from COVID, residing in County Commission District 3. And whereas Mr. Breedwell and his wife, Susie, were married for 44 years, during which time they lived in Atlanta, Georgia, and in Southern California, welcoming a daughter, Meredith, and sons Jeff and Wes, but later moved to Wilson County. And whereas his work history was that of project management until he chose to leave the corporate world and traded that for what would become his life's passion. And whereas in 2010, he graduated from Cumberland University, went to work as a special education teacher with both Metro and Wilson County Schools. And whereas his love of theater and his love for the art of storytelling made him a fantastic educator, having a special ability to teach the educational basics in a not-so-basic way. And whereas he recognized the importance of every child that regardless of their academic capability, has a desire for learning. And whereas his love of children would earn him the nickname at Dotson Elementary as the kid whisperer. And whereas his truest form of joy was being a pop-pop to his four amazing grandchildren, Ashlyn, Ike, Cora, and Zoe. And whereas at his passing, he left behind the great debate of which mini wheats are the best and the desire to see Ohio State University win another college football national championship. And whereas known as a great storyteller, words were never sparse, as he grew up in Athens, Tennessee, with a reputation of being the town chatterbox. And whereas the admiration for words, the sense of grandeur, and the talent of showmanship would become his lifelong legacy, weaving a ribbon of entertainment through all life situations. Whereas Mr. Breedwell was in constant pursuit of Christ's love and would minister to others finding solace and community by sharing the love of God, his ministry work would blend his love of theater, music, and production, producing countless plays, musicals, and productions, where he would show the love of God on stage. His productions wouldn't just impact those in the audience, but those who were lucky enough to share the stage. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we remember the many contributions that Don Eugene Breedwell gave to those around him during his time on earth, express our condolences to his wife, children, and grandchildren for his passing from this life, and encourage them to remember the many fine attributes and examples that Don Eugene Breedwell exhibited in his life. It's my...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On behalf of me, I appreciate everyone's support and able to give this presentation to the Breedwell family.
Yeah, we've got to bend it way down, folks, way down. I just have a real quick story about Wilson County. Back in the late eighties and early nineties, we had three cross-country moves from California to Tennessee in 26 months with three small kids. The first time, we moved to Williamson County. Didn't stay there long, went back to California. When we knew we were coming back to the natural area, Don said, "We are going to Wilson County. We are not going to Williamson." And I went, "Wilson County? Where's that?" And we have come to love it over the past 30 years as our home. We've lived here longer than either of us grew up in our hometowns, and it is home. It's wonderful to be back here in this room tonight and see so many faces that I know and love. And I appreciate you all, appreciate what you do, and I thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you, Commissioner Franklin. This time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Sonia Robinson.
Superintendent Murphy, if you'd like to come up here, please. You know, it's a joy for me to be able to recognize these men and say that you have...
And all the road commissioners, all of them that are represented here tonight. Come on, please.
Hey, all y'all, come up here.
Come on, Tommy, get up there.
Yeah, I love you, Tommy. I love you.
Don't do it, Cliff. Don't pick on me.
No, all, just workers.
Y'all can go over there, too, if you want to. To be able to stand up here tonight and to read this is an honor for me because I can say I've been there, done that. And I have been with the Wilson County Road Commission for now, on the board, and at the commission for 23 years. So it's an honor for me. These are the most wonderful guys. And I told them when I left there, 60 men work at this Wilson County Road Commission, and I've never, ever have had one disrespectful moment out of any of these guys. It's the most respected men I believe I have ever met. So it's an honor for me to stand up here and to read this recognition honoring these guys. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring the employees, staff, and administration of the Wilson County Road Commission. Whereas during very turbulent times, beginning with March 3rd, 2020, tornadoes, COVID-19 pandemic, a major snow event, and several rain events, which precipitated minor flooding, straight-line winds, and downed trees, and in one instance, major flooding, the employees, staff, and administration of the Wilson County Road Commission have persevered to fulfill their responsibilities. And whereas according to Homeland Security Presidential Directive, county highway department personnel are classified as first responders who provide support services during an emergency. And whereas we are blessed and fortunate to have the men and women employees, staff, and administration of the Wilson County Road Commission under the leadership of Road Superintendent Steve Murphy and Assistant Road Superintendent Sharon Lackey. And whereas this dedicated group of men and women as first responders are required to leave their families during a severe weather event, work around the clock during severe weather events, cut trees out of roadways in the dark, deal with downed power lines, avoiding speeding motorists in work zones, be responsible for snow and ice removal on 856 miles of county roads, and endure the daily dangers of working around heavy equipment. Whereas this workforce of 60 workers is always on call and perform their task at compensation not comparable to private enterprise for the same type of work. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the County of Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we thank and honor the men and women of the Wilson County Road Commission for their commitment and dedication to the task of keeping county roads passable and drivable, not only during days of beautiful weather, but during inclement weather events like tornadoes, straight-line winds, downed trees, ice, snowstorms, and flooding. Be it further resolved that we express our appreciation to them through the adoption of this resolution.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Only thing I need to say is, I appreciate what these guys do. You know, in the middle of the night, it is kind of tough. I've been there and I've done that, like Sonia said. And I appreciate the guys more than anything because they do a whole lot for me. They make me and Sharon look good, and I appreciate what they do, all these guys and the ones that are not here. But thank you. Thank y'all.
Congratulations, all of you that are here and all of that department. They make us all look good. I can say that for us. This time, Commissioner Lauren Breeze.
Beckett, please have Dominic Love and his family, and Coach Rowlett, please join me up here at the podium.
Not for sure about Coach Rowlett now.
I know, be nice. He's a constituent.
I know Coach Rowlett. We go back a ways.
Figured you did. Dominic Love is, they're walking up, and this young man won the first state title in the history of Green Hill High School in any event, any sport, anything. So very proud of this young man and what he's going to do in his future. So I'd like to read, "Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, honoring Dominic Love for being a state champion in wrestling. Whereas from being the season unsure, or beginning the season unsure of whether there would even be a season, through much adversity, Green Hill High School wrestler Dominic Love achieved his goal of winning a state championship and leading his high school wrestling team to a 21st place finish in the state. And whereas the son of Melanie and Derek Love, Dominic began his season conditioning and working out at Mount Juliet Middle School while construction was being finished at Green Hill High School. And not knowing if there would even be a wrestling season due to the pandemic, he persevered. And whereas facing the challenge of having nowhere to practice due to the wrestling room being used for storage and having to borrow mats to practice on, Dominic and his teammates continued to work out to put themselves in the best shape possible by the time the season started. And whereas the season started, their hard work and perseverance paid off, as they shocked a lot of teams, no one expecting the first-year program to come out and do as well as they did. And whereas after overcoming an injury and losing his first match to a beach wrestler, Dominic followed the advice of his coaches who kept telling him that it was just a bump in the road, and for that, he went the rest of the season, including the state tournament, without another individual loss. And whereas through this crazy season, the team overcame adversity, and Dominic being the only Green Hill wrestler qualified for the state tournament, finished the season with a record of 25 wins and one loss, pinning his opponent in the state quarterfinals, semifinals, and finals, paving the way for a talented younger group of wrestlers in the future to achieve whatever goals they set, including a state championship. Whereas head coach Brad Rowlett and assistant coaches Kyle Mitchell and Clint Toller provide the stability, leadership, and confidence to Dominic Love to achieve his goal of winning the state championship. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we hereby recognize Green Hill High School wrestler Dominic Love for his year of accomplishments culminating in the first state championship for Dominic and for Green Hill High School, and offer our support and encouragement to him and his fellow wrestlers as they continue to improve and compete in the wrestling program at Green Hill High School.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank everybody out here for honoring me today, and I'd like to thank my family and my coach for pushing me to be as good. Thank you.
One thing that was not noted was, he's not only an outstanding athlete, he's an outstanding student athlete. And I've said this before, Green Hill High could not have handpicked a better individual to be the first state champ. He's going on to Florida A&amp;M. They have a club wrestling team, engineering. You should have told them that, sir. So a lot of positive things happening on the hill, and he's a leader. He's a trendsetter. He's paving the way for us, and I look for several other kids and parents to be up here next year and years to come. Thank you. The reason Dom is Dom is these two individuals right here. You couldn't find a better support group. A lot of times, we deal, we're educators, just I'll leave it at this, outstanding people, great people to work with, and I'm very appreciative for y'all.
Congratulations. Dominique, Dominique, Dominique. Coach Costly and Coach Dow said if you need them to kind of work with over the summer, somebody to practice with as you get ready... I guess they don't call them sparring partners, anything like that in wrestling, but that's what they'd be. Congratulations. This time, we'll have a public hearing tonight, and so I guess I need a motion to go out of session. All in favor, say aye. And opposed? This time, I'll introduce Planning Director, Mr. Tom Brishers.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, May 17th, 2021, at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the county commission room of the county courthouse located here at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee. Items for consideration will start with an application that's been made by Joe Haddix of Civil Site Design Group, representing property owner Wayne Wright, requesting rezoning of property from A1 agricultural zoning to R1 with a planned unit development overlay. The property is located on Zachary Road, Vesta Road, and Murphysboro Road, and is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 142, Parcell 6 and 30. And a copy of this request has been on file for the past couple of months in my office in the basement. Anyone wishing to comment is requested to come forward at this time.
Anyone wishing to speak on a Zachary Road, Vesta Road property, please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Danny Connor. I live at 803 Vesta Road. I've been before, you folks, before. I've just got a couple of items here. I've got three items I want to discuss. One is basically a question to Sonia. My question is, why would you vote to change A1 to R1 PUD? Last April on 19th, y'all voted, or were going to vote, and the first person that voted yes was Sonia. Then two other commissioners came up with the idea we need to look at some flooding situation with this property. So that's why it was put off till this time. I don't see, Sonia, I don't see why you would approve something like this and betray your voters, to be honest with you. We got 24 people on this list, and 24 people do not want this. They would like to see it stay A1. It's going to change the whole dynamics of the neighborhood, and we're upset about it. You know, you change the law, and the next thing is you open a can of worms for the same thing to happen in other properties, smaller properties, too. I mean, everybody's going to want to do it. So why do it? That's my question. Why would you do that? The second thing is, the first or second meeting, I don't remember which, I've been to all the meetings with the zoning board, too, and the zoning board, one person had a question about the ingress egress of the trucks on the construction site. Now, this site's going to run probably at least two years. I mean, I don't know how long it's going to be to develop this whole site, but it's going to be at least two years. And what I understood last meeting with the commissioners was that we were going to exit it, egress, ingress, right on Vesta. Now, the first or second meeting, the developer said that he would put a temporary road in to old Murphysboro Road to keep the congestion off of Vesta with all the trucks and the mud and the trash that's going to be dumped on right in the middle. In fact, it happens to be right in front of my house. So I'm pretty upset about that. The third thing here, basically, y'all postponed this meeting till this month to get an analysis of the site as far as the flooding goes, and that was done, correct. Tom, I have that analysis.
Yes, sir.
An interesting thing on that analysis, it's a preliminary analysis. It doesn't really tell you anything. In other words, it's not approved by your zoning people or your building people at all. So it's just a preliminary discussion possible. And one of the bad things is, it's only for 222 houses, and they're asking you guys to vote on 258 houses tonight. So they didn't really bring you the paperwork you need to do this. You see what I'm saying? I mean, if you've got another 30 houses, you've got more concrete, you've got more driveways, you've got more patios, and you've got less saturation. So how could these numbers that they've provided be true? And I guess the bottom line is, if you go ahead with this project and things start flooding, who's responsible? Who'd I come after if my house floods? Because this property has a, it drains down to Hurricane Creek, actually across Vesta Road. At one point, if you look at the plan, you'll see it on the plan where it drains. And I mean, I know this engineer's an engineer, but is it true or is it not true? In other words, who do I go to if my house is flooded? Because I don't have flood insurance. I'm not in a 100-year flood plane, so I don't need it. And other 24 people don't either. But what happens if we do flood? Where do I go to? Who do I seek ramification? The city? The county? Or the engineer? I don't know. You have to tell me that. But I definitely think that this construction traffic needs to be, ingress and egress needs to be on old Murphysboro Road as opposed to Vesta Road. And that's all I've got to say, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on 706 Vesta Road?
My name is Jared Irbach. I live at 825 Vesta Road. I lived on Vesta roughly five years. I've personally seen it flooded three times on both ends of Vesta Road, but the only way to get out is through Zachary Road, the second road that entrance for this development. I can imagine how it's going to be with 200-plus houses trying to get out at the same time. My biggest concern is my two-year-old son that likes to play in the yard. We have trucks that go through there constantly. I can't imagine having this many people trying to get in and out of Vesta Road, the main entrance, which is directly across from me. I don't want to stand up here and say no to someone's dreams. I can only ask you to take into consideration the people who live on Vesta Road. There's nothing stopping them from building, as is on A1. We do not need 200-plus houses on Vesta Road on 170-acre lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 706 Vesta Road? We'll go to the next one now, Tom, on the public hearing. Art Joe?
Good evening. Joe Haddix, Civil Site Design Group. Want to thank staff for working with us between meetings. We had received a list of some preliminary drainage information to review, which is pretty common when we move to the next step in the process, which would be concept plan or preliminary plat. Couple key points to this site, you've heard that the overall acreage is 171 acres. We're preserving about 100 acres of that as open space, using the cluster lot provision in the county. Mr. Connor was mentioning access. During the preliminary meetings and planning commission meeting, we agreed to no construction traffic access to Zachary Road, that we would take all of our construction access to Vesta. That was recommendation of staff, and we adhered to that and commit to it. Also, we are proposing 222... Also, we are proposing 222 homes. The 258 homes that are listed on the site data table is just showing what we could, what we could have asked for using the PUD provision. So we're actually requesting a little bit less than what we could ask for. Now, the preliminary drainage report, we've, we've looked at the site. Everybody knows there's, there are some sinkholes or cars features out in the area. Our development stays off of those. We're up the drainage basin from the, the sinkholes or dropouts with two, I'm going to call them oversized detention ponds. So current county requirements require you to detain and hold the 25-year storm and pass the 50 through the 100, just through the pond. So what, what we can commit to as part of this project is that we will actually reduce the peak runoff for the site to a predeveloped level for the two-year through the 100-year storm event, which is actually a little bit above and beyond what current regulations would require of us. Now, looking at that, certainly not going to make it any worse than it was now, probably slow the water down just a little bit from what it is. Going to the dropouts now certainly could help those accept some water a little bit faster. So I'll reserve any other time if anybody has any questions. I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 706 Vesta Road? Not Tom, we'll move on with 8999 Lebanon Road.
The next public hearing we have to come before the commission tonight is an application that's been made by Paul Crockett Land Surveying, representing Steve Rainey and Bernard Gerald, requesting to rezone approximately 1.24 acres from A1 agricultural to LOC, Limited Office Commercial Zoning. The property is located at 8999, I get enough nines, 8,999 Lebanon Road, referenced by Wilson County Property Map 55 Parcel 1. Again, a copy of this has been on file in the, in the basement of the courthouse here in the planning office. The rezoning request will be heard on final reading following the public hearing by the county commission. Anyone requesting to speak on this matter is requested to come forward at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on the rezoning on Lebanon Road? See you tonight, we'll move forward with 3436 Couchville Pike.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing that's been made by Big Rig Parking LLC, requesting to rezone approximately 21.35 acres from C4 Planned Commercial Zoning to C3 Highway Commercial with a planned unit development overlay. The property is located at 3436 Couchville Pike and is referenced as Wilson County Property Map 137 Parcel 2.19. Again, a copy of this request has been on file in the basement in, in the planning office, and anyone wishing to speak on this matter is requested to come forward at this
Good evening. My name is Jim Rodriguez. I represent the, the ownership, Westmont Realty Capital, out of Dallas, who owns 245 Couchville Industrial Pike. I've also been asked to speak on behalf of the ownership of 445 Couchville Industrial Pike Dream Realty. The concerns that our client, or my client at 245 Couchville Industrial have, and echoed by the, the ownership of 445 Couchville Industrial are traffic overflow as trucks come on to this lot. What does that do? Because it's proximity to Couchville Pike, what does that do if there's multiple trucks backed up? Can it get to the overpass on 840? And how does that impact, you know, with Loves right across the street? What does that do to traffic? You know, we talked about Vesta Road, does that back up all the way to, you know, as people come off of 840 to go home? What does that look like? The stormwater plan is a big concern. You know, we've seen flooding in the area in the past. We've had overruns from, you know, just with Loves being paved to come into our detention pond and, and cause some concerns with clients there, with the, the customers in the building there. Also, security, what does that look like? You know, trash pickup, is there going to be onsite security? Is there going to be a requirement for, you know, as, as truckers come? I mean, it's just a concern of, of what comes next with that. Is there, and I know the, the ownership group, and they're going to, they're going to discuss this, but our questions, you know, what does that look like? Is there a security risk? Is it fenced? Does it let, well let? Are there going to be a need? Is there potential for, you know, self, self-enforcement of security? And what does the, what does the county anticipate in terms of any additional drive-bys by, by the Sheriff's Department there? You know, trespassing by, if there's overflow, if the parking lot is full, what does that do to those, do other drivers park on the, you know, park on the street, park on Couchville Pike elsewhere in the area? And just, you know, those types of plans in terms of overflow parking? And then obviously, I think I mentioned garbage and debris as well. What are the, what are cleanup plans there? And is there any, with that increased truck traffic, will there be a need for increased road repair due to that traffic brought to the, the trailer lot there? And I believe that's it. But I have a letter that my client asked me to, to submit to counsel to the commission tonight. Tom, I don't know if I give this, I assume I just give this to you, but they asked that I provide that to you with their concerns. And that's all I've got. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this property?
I'd like to ask a question.
Oh, you want to wait till we go in session?
No.
Okay.
Did you tell me, did you just say that you're with 245 Couchville Pike?
Yes, ma'am.
I was at your building today, talking to a couple of folks there, because we need to talk to you about a drainage problem that we feel like that your warehouse is possibly caught on Vesta. So if there's any way at all that I can get in touch with you and have a meeting with you, because I called about four people today trying to get in touch with somebody that could have a meeting with me and, and the planner here about your building.
Oops. Do you want me to read it? Yeah, I will wait, just let this next guy come. Come on, sir.
Good evening. Matt Lackey, civil engineer, Reagan Smith, representing the Big Rig Parking. I just want to address a few of those items I just heard from and then save the remaining of my time. In regards to traffic, we, we don't have a traffic study in hand, but the queuing distance off of Couchville Pike is considerable, and that is a public road already serving a number of warehouses. In regards to the storm, we have done a lot of analysis with Tom and the county engineer, and the detention pond as designed currently exceeds county requirements, and yet we have committed to increasing detention by 50% above and beyond that. In regards to security, we will have security fence, we have cameras, we do have lighting, and I do believe we've had discussions with the county sheriff to do additional drive-bys, ride-throughs. And in regards to trash, there will be onsite trash, and that will be handled on a, a manner that it will not be an issue. We'll have dumpsters, we have individual trash bins throughout the, the site, so all of that will be addressed. So with the remaining of my time, I'll, I'll just reserve that for any questions.
It's Tom. Tom, if you'd like to read the letter that was presented.
I've been asked to read the letter submitted by Westmont Realty into the record by some of the commission. It says, Dear Mrs. Bain, which is one of my staff members, says, please accept this letter as response by the adjoining property owner, National Industrial Property LP, to the rezon request by Big Rig Parking LLC, parentheses quotations, Big Rig, close parentheses, as provided in the attached letter from Wilson County Development Services dated May 7th, 2021. We appreciate the opportunity to provide the following. One, please describe the improvements that are planned on the Big Rig site, including fencing, lighting, and et cetera. Two, please define the use and hours of operation for the Big Rig site and list any prohibited uses. Will increased law enforcement be required? What self-enforcement security plan will Big Rig implement to address onsite security issues? Three, given that the Big Rig site will be paved, what are the plans to address mitigate drainage and detention of stormwater from the site? Question mark. Our adjacent site, in parentheses, and other sites, closed parentheses, has experienced adverse effects from excessive runoff. Number four, describe recent traffic studies and remediation measures to guarantee effective traffic, traffic flow, given there is only one two-lane road into and out of the park. What will be the impact of having a truck terminal? Will users be blocked by signing in or using a QR code? Five, what measures will be put in place to ensure unauthorized parking on Couchville Pike Industrial Boulevard? What happens if the lot fills and there are clients overflowing onto the street? Six, what measures will be implemented on the Big Rig site to prevent authorized users from trespassing on surrounding industrial properties? Question mark. What will be implemented to ensure authorized users do not go to or park at, in parentheses, or drive on, closed parentheses, neighboring properties? Number seven, are you allowing people to walk across this road to Loves, potentially causing a risk of human life? Question mark. Eight, what obligations will be required at Big Rig site to ensure appearance, repairs, daily debris, maintenance will occur? Question mark. What is the trash pickup plan from people potentially tossing it out in front of the property as they come to or from the location? Nine, what measures will be implemented to ensure the condition and repair of Couchville Industrial Boulevard is maintained? We very much appreciate the opportunity to present the above and look forward to your responses. Respectfully, National Industrial Property LP, Westmont Realty Group LLC, Manager Ronald W. Gilbreth, Managing Director, Asset and Property Management.
Anyone else wishing to speak on 3436 Couchville Pike? See you tonight. This concludes our public comment period. Do I have a time, a motion to go back into session?
No, move.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Tom?
The, the first item I guess we have is the deferred rezoning request from last month, and that is for the Wright property at Zachary Road, Vesta Road, and 2, and Old Murphy's Borough Road. You do have a planned unit development master plan. We did get that in your packet as, as we did last month as well. We did put that back in your packet with some of the revised commitments, as I understand it, that the applicants have made with regard to the additional drainage commitments. Not insignificant is the recent commitment that they are proposing to detain to the 100-year storm. Most of the time when we get designs for, I guess you could say, regional industry standard in terms of regulations, we detain to the 10 and 25-year storm with allowance to pass the 100-year storm through the site. This applicant is proposing to detain 100-year storms coming off of this property. I do have the county engineer here, if you wish to get into more detail about the drainage on the property. I believe the applicant is correct in that they did commit not to allow access onto Zachary Road with their construction traffic, that they would direct their construction traffic, traffic off of Vesta Road, in part because Old Murphy's Borough Road is a hard turn to get back into for truck traffic coming off of 231 South for construction traffic or, or other traffic. You may recall from the last, last month's hearing on this, the, the PUD does allow you to seek some of these additional commitments with regard to things like drainage, things like the fire service. In this instance, this does fall outside of the ISO response, five-mile response zone that is typical of WEMA to, to try to evaluate how well they can serve a particular area. In response to that, this applicant has agreed to fully sprinkler the homes in the, in the development in, in whole. They, they have provided some open space improvements, including a gazebo, and I'm drawing a blank right now on the other two open space improvements, but I think there are three. Christopher? What are the other open space improvements I've forgotten? The fence and a playground. So there's a pavilion, a sports court, and a playground as a part of this. They have committed to 2,000 square foot minimum heated floor area for each of the And I think that answers most of the questions I wanted to cover. I will mention, since we went out of public hearing, there was someone that mentioned they had a, a list of 30 names, I think one of the gentlemen that spoke at the public hearing. I don't know if that's been submitted for the record, or if you wish to submit that for the record, but if you do, I'll be happy to take it and make sure it gets into the county commission minutes.
Okay, this is in Ms. Robinson's district. I'll, you'll have her first.
It is. This has come to us tonight as a positive recommendation from the staff. They, it was deferred from last month for 30 days. It went through the committee, they looked at it, so I'm going to support this tonight and ask you to support this recommendation.
And, and more correctly, it, it did receive a positive recommendation from the Wilson County Regional Planning Commission, which is the consider, the recommendation you're supposed to consider.
So we've got a motion, do I hear a second? I got a second now, I've got several discussions. I'll start out with Commissioner Dow.
So the sprinkler system, is there a bigger main going in there to cover all those homes? Or?
That's going to be a conversation between Global Utility District and the developer. My understanding from Global Utility District, though, in, in my preliminary discussions with them on this rezoning, is they have plenty of water to service this development.
Okay. And the clubhouse, is, is there a clubhouse to it?
No, there is not a clubhouse.
Not a clubhouse, so it's all?
There's an open pavilion for meeting space, and there's a, a sports court.
Playground.
And a playground, thank you. It's got a lot to it, so I can't remember all of it, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Tom, as is, without the rezoning, what's the number of homes that could go on it today right now?
Give me just a second, I'll tell you. I did not bring my recommendations that I gave to the planning.
For some reason, I'm recalling 170 or?
Yeah. If it is 171 acres times 43,560 times .75 divided by 40,000 square feet, I'm, I'm coming up with 140.
So?
Forty lots, both versus 200 and, 222. If they were to apply for straight R1 zoning, and you were of a mind to grant straight R1 zoning without the PUD, they would be eligible for as many as 224 lots. This master plan, while the PUD actually gives them a bonus they can take advantage of in return for some of the improvements they're making, or some of the commitments they're making, that, that bonus would have allowed them to get as many as 258 lots. Their master plan is showing 222 lots.
So regardless, a neighborhood can go in there?
Yes, sir.
And all of the issues of flooding and all of that would still exist, and we wouldn't have the detention areas and all of that?
You would, we're going to review for drainage for any subdivision that goes in, you know?
But they would, they could just do it standard.
They could do the standard development, that's correct, in terms of drainage, drainage ways. Now, you know, in deference to someone who may think differently, you know, they are larger lots, there's more, more ground for, I guess, permeability, things like that in a 40,000-square-foot lot subdivision as opposed to 25. But I have a feeling on, on a lot like this one, particularly where they're going to have to serve it if they want to do a subdivision by, by public sewer, and the only form of public sewer we have this far out in the county is the step system. They, they would likely take advantage of the cluster provision, which means they're probably not going to go to a standard 40,000-square-foot lot anyways. They're going to cluster, just like they are in this master plan, into one section of the property.
Commissioner Gentry?
My question's been answered, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Commissioner McFarland?
What size is the main water line on Vesta Road? Whatever the road is on.
My master plan that I have in front of me is too small to look at, but I believe it's a, I believe it's a six inch. I don't know if Danny's here tonight, but it's either a six inch or an eight inch.
Eight, eight inches.
It is, yeah. I know the smallest that a hydrant can go on is six inches, and I don't believe Global pedals in anything less than that, so. I do have the county engineer here, if, if you have, or the consultant county engineer, should you have any additional questions about what we've went through with the applicant on drainage? And I, it's not just for this one, there's another one coming up, a little, here in a couple of minutes, that there's, there's significant drainage that we need to discuss as well.
Any other questions on 706 Vesta Road? Are you ready to vote? Got a motion and a second. All in favor to rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The record reflected was unanimous, we'll move on.
Sir, if you wish to submit that petition, you're welcome to. I'll be glad to take it and get it to the right people to get it into the minutes. The next item on the agenda is a rezoning that was in Mount Juliet's regional planning area, or planning region. It is still in the county, however. An application has been made by Paul Crockett of Crockett Land Surveying, representing Steve Rainey and Bernard Gerald, to rezone approximately 1.24 acres from A1 agricultural to LOC, Limited Office Commercial. The property is located at 8999 Lebanon Road and is referenced as Wilson County Property Map 55 Parcel 1. The rezoning request- The rezoning request was presented to the City of Mount Juliet Regional Planning Commission on April 15, 2021, as it is within their planning region and is being forwarded to the Wilson County Commission with a positive recommendation.
Come into, Commissioner Bernard, send his district.
Okay, thank you. I've had no calls about this, and Tom and I, we've discussed it and thought the LOC would fit it, so I recommend it be approved to LOC.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The record reflected was unanimous as well. Tom?
The next item on the agenda is a rezoning for Big Rig Parking LLC, requesting to rezone approximately 21.35 acres from C4 Plan Commercial, which it's, I want you to be clear about that, it's already a master plan commercial specific district. They're requesting to rezone from that to a C3 Highway Commercial with a planned unit development overlay. The property is located at 3436 Couch Hill Pike, and is referenced as Wilson County Property Map 137, parcel 2.19. The rezoning request was presented to the Wilson County Planning Commission on April 16, 2021, and is being forwarded to the Wilson County Planning Commission with a positive recommendation. This does have a master plan with it. Many of you may be aware of a large sinkhole-related drainage problem we have at the corner of Couch Hill McCrory. Many of you may have heard some of the public testimony a minute ago from some of the neighbors, specific to 245 Couch Hill Pike. This actual piece of property was initially developed, and that, and the existing detention pond that's on the property was developed in relation to the development of the building at 245 Couch Hill Pike. I also believe that the other property that he was, that, that gentleman mentioned, which is 445 Couch Hill Pike, I believe that also will have been a part of this, the original piece of property that the 245 Couch Hill Pike building was on. There is a detention pond on this property right now. The current zoning would allow a warehouse, much like the other warehouses in that particular C4 district, to be built on that property. The folks that have applied for rezoning have asked for it to be more or less a truck parking lot that's secured and fenced, has a, has a entry gate, and I guess acts as an overflow parking area, both for through truck traffic, but also for people just wanting to stop and spend the night and maybe get a shower at Lowe's, Love's, terms, in terms of truckers, not just anybody, but truckers. You know, being able to go over there and, and, and take advantage of the Love's truck stop that's there. Of course, Love's truck stop does have some parking. The other interesting aspect of it, that we felt this C3 PUD probably provided some advantage for with regard to the trucks in the area, is we currently have people overnight parking on the right-of-way on many of these roads out there in their trucks. In that environment, on the side of the public road, out as far as it is, that represents a security risk, both for the truckers and for just anybody that's out in that area without a lot of law enforcement around. This is a secured site for people to park on and provides additional areas for truckers to park, which I understand is a growing problem in the, in the United States right now. There's not enough overnight truck parking for the freight industry to make use of right now. In terms of the drainage side, while that, that sinkhole that cert, that I guess serves as more or less the drain for the area until you get further south back down to the lake, that sinkhole does not function well. It is on this property. The detention pond that is on this property right now drains to that sinkhole initially until it overflows, and does overflow the back berm into the 245 Couch Hill Pike building facility, which is there and has since been split off into separate large acreage tracts for sale by realty companies. So from that perspective, this may well represent our only opportunity to do anything about the detention pond, or excuse me, both the detention pond and the sinkhole that is not draining correctly. It's on private property. If nobody develops, I don't have any ability to go in there and tell somebody to, to clean it out of my own accord, and I can, we don't have a public works department, so in terms of getting anything done about that sinkhole that's not draining, the only thing we can do is hopefully have it developed. It's staff's and the planning commission's perspective that this is probably the, the best option that we've got in terms of both getting it developed in a less taxing way on the property and surrounding properties, but also getting improvements, both in terms of the detention pond capacity that's on the property, and they're also committing to what's called a classified deep well injection permit on the property whereby they'll go in and clean out the throat of that sinkhole. What I can tell you about that sinkhole right now is it does flood, floods across Couch Hill McCrory Pike at times on, on the right rain event, March 27th and 28th being one of those events, May 10, May of 2010 being another one of those events. It takes a significant rainfall, but when it happens, it's bad. So what I can tell you going forward is if we have that type of rain event, it's probably going to flood again, and we haven't done anything to fix that. I won't promise that this is going to fix that problem in whole or even in part, but I know that if we don't do anything, it's not going to get any better. So the, the commitments that they're making as a part of this PUD, I think are important. It's a, I guess, a part of the equation in terms of trying to resolve some of the drainage issues we do have down there. Another part of that equation is trying to come up with a reunified drainage plan across all of the properties, including 245 Couch Hill Pike, and the property, I think, referenced as 400 and some odd address, 445 Couch Hill Pike, to allow water, when it does overflow, to, to have a, a, a clear, defined path to go on south and get into either Hurricane Creek or Percy Priest Lake, which is where it all drains to eventually, either, either above ground or subterranean. So to Ms. Robinson's point a minute ago, my understanding is several people have been trying to reach out to the property owners at 245 Couch Hill Pike about perhaps participating in some side of, some sort of comprehensive drainage plan. One other thing I should mention about these applicants is they have committed to be a part of any type of comprehensive drainage solution, although they're not going to do that of their own accord without everyone's agreement. What they've committed to at present is to increase the capacity of the sinkhole and by approximately 140,000 cubic feet, if I'm not mistaken, and, or, excuse me, the detention pond, and also to clean out the sinkhole. And to provide a, hopefully, more permeable solution in terms of what's ultimately there as opposed to a large warehouse. They are here, if you wish to ask them questions in terms of the applicants. The county engineer is here, if you have additional questions about drainage.
I go to Ms. Robinson first, it's in her district.
When this first came to me, I was a little hesitant, but I called for a meeting, and, and Tom was involved with this as the other folks, and I had a meeting with Sheriff Bryan. And after we had a long, lengthy meeting with him, he was okay, and, and he gave us our blessing on it. So tonight, I asked for this to be approved.
One other point that probably needs to be made for the record, I do believe, and they may, you may want them to speak if you wish to suspend the rules, but.
I got, let me, let me get, I got, I got a motion, let me get a second.
Second.
Okay, now, discussion. Tom?
I believe they've committed to trying to hire some additional law enforcement for, for security purposes. They do have cameras and surveillance on the, the lot itself, they've shown, where they've shown us examples of where they've done that in another location in southern middle Tennessee, and I believe if they're willing to stand up and commit to it, that, that they've made some agreement that they would try to seek some additional off-duty law enforcement to perhaps surveil the property from time to time.
You're welcome to come speak if you'd like.
And if I, if I got anything wrong with regard to the drainage, I would welcome your conversation there, both either from the county engineer or consultant's engineer, the applicant's engineer.
So I'm, I'm Pound Lamb, I'm the founder of Big Rig Parking. We saw a need, as Tom mentioned, there's about 4.4 million over-the-road drivers and about 400,000 parking spaces. It's a national crisis, they're starting to vote legislation on it at a national level. I know you see it with people parking on and off on ramps, there've been a couple of deaths in the state. I've met with the state patrol here. As far as meeting with the sheriff, what we found is, with all the defund the police stuff, we have lots of officers that are happy to have extra hours, so it's great for us, where instead of hiring them to hire a security company, we can actually have law enforcement, which they will never talk back to, and so, which is great. It is state-of-the-art security, 24-hour surveillance, we have a 24-hour call center that's a video chat, that they get a live person if they have any problems as well. And I was going to give my card to the gentleman back here, just to, I'm always happy to answer those questions from them as well on a, on a one-to-one basis. They will walk across to the Love's. One of the reasons, we'll have two entry gates to try to make sure that we don't have backed-up traffic on Couch Hill, that's one of the biggest things, is we don't want to back up traffic. You, they start coming in about four o'clock in the day, and we'll come to probably about midnight, seems to be our normal pattern. Occasionally, you may have one, but it's a reservation-based system, so if they're in Omaha this morning, they can make a reservation in Nashville tonight. We're just trying to spread across the state and then eventually nationally, but what other questions can I answer? I feel like I'm.
Let me hang on one second. Commissioner McFarland? Just punch your cue, please.
Tom, you want to discuss the permeability of the surface? And you may want to.
Yeah, I, I can't remember the initials, it's, I, I call it tar and chip, but what, it's not tar and chip.
Never a bituminous surface? I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not the person to ask, we have a.
He's right there, I think.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
Um, don't go. It's DBST from T-Dot, specifications, double bituminous surface treatment, it's basically two layers of chip seal, that's it.
And they, and they, they will periodically come and, and resurface it to flatten it back out, because none of their clientele wants to go through a bunch of ruts, get into their parking space, so they, and now, long-term, it's going to compact down with the weight of those semis, and it will become rather impermeable, as I understand it from the county engineer, but I still think this is probably a better option than start now with an industrial concrete section around the perimeter of a large building with a metal roof.
Can I add just one thing? To the stormwater cals that I worked with, with the county engineer on, all the cals that we did, when I mentioned the fact that we're exceeding county regs today, which is true, we detained up to the 50 and pass above the 50, all of those calculations are based on the full extent of that lot being developed to the maximum impervious ratio surface and using the full as concrete. So our cals are not taking credit for the difference in the permeability in that, it's a bonus, and we're still providing, and you're, you're on, it's 50% more on the, the detention volume and then creating an injection well, actually.
Commissioner Walker?
A quick question, how many parking slots are there going to be for trailers there?
270. I doubt we'll end up.
They're not going to drop trailers, that's one thing you've said.
And I don't think, again, we're actually going to hit that number, you know, with dumpsters, all that kind of stuff. One of the things that we really want is a place that truckers love to park at, so we're not trying to squeeze in every single parking space. We try to park them where they've got, you know, when you're turning in those things, there's no backup lights on a, you know, you, you want to give them lots of space, and you know, that's one of the biggest complaints. Two of the partners are in the trucking industry, they want to ease the parking, and, and it sounds really corny to say, but my mantra is, I want to be the Chick-fil-A of parking. I just want it to be a great, clean experience, and I, you know, everybody gives the truckers kind of a bad rap, and you've got some messy ones out there. We have a, a lot manager that's going to be coming out every day, they, he cleans, he cuts, does all of that fun stuff, but they want a clean, safe place, too, and we've got nothing but just super positive response from the truckers that come in, so. Yes, sir.
Follow-up to that.
Sure.
So if you can make reservations at Big Rig, what are typical reservations at four, eight, 12-hour time slots? What are they doing?
Also, for their compliance, after 11 hours of driving, truckers have to stop for a mandatory 10-hour rest period, and so it's typically 12 to 24-hour loops that they're there, and they're sleeping most of the time. It's not going to be lit up like a football field, because they want to sleep, if I answered that correctly.
Commissioner Dow?
Did you say it was gated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so did, have you talked to the, the director of WEMA about click to enter?
Uh.
How would we get in there? How would he get?
He'll have to do click to enter.
Oh, yes, sir.
We'll be handling it at the site, at the site plan stage, for sure.
When you say, when you say we, like the, any county?
I'm the one in the city, and he's the one in the county.
Okay.
So I was just wondering, man, we.
Yes, sir, there's emergency stuff on the ga, you know, any emergency vehicles that come up. We also provide the sheriff's department with QR codes, the trash companies, basically anybody that wants to, again, we, we, we promote people coming through, and one of the things that I emphasize to the sheriff is, we will prosecute, we want that to get out, truckers are really big on social media, like if you're going to do something bad, you don't want to park there. We put pictures, don't laugh, on our other one, we're putting pictures of the sheriff's department out by the car on our Facebook page, we want to know that that's a presence there, if that makes sense.
And then, Tom, what about hydrants? Is it going to be placed all over around it, or?
Hydrants.
Hydrant, fire.
That, that again is not something that we've covered at the conceptual master plan level, but that is something that we will cover during the site plan, we always do. And at this point, whether you guys know it or not, Joey's staff has been terribly beneficial lately, they've really waded in and, and gotten involved in our planning process, so with any site plan that we do, we're.
Well, this was an altogether package, and they're fixing this tape.
No, 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 they've got to come in with a site plan that gets approved by planning.
Mr. Jones?
And during that time, Joey's staff will be part of the review process, and they'll be talking about things like hydrant locations and click to enter, which is state law, by the way, but.
Mr. Jones?
Just for the record, Tom, there won't be any access onto McCrory Road, right?
That is correct. The, the master plan, you'll notice that the property does extend to McCrory Road. Honestly, the detention pond that's existing there, that they'll be making improvements to blocks, really any access to McCrory Road by vehi, by, by semi-vehicle especially, but really any vehicle, and secondly, I don't think they've got any desire to go over there, so.
Second thing, I'm sure you know better than me, but the elevation of the detention pond will not be risen.
No, they are, as I understand it, they are going down, they're lowering it. They're lowering it by up two, three feet to get that additional capacity.
Commissioner Gentry?
Uh, no question.
Commissioner McFarland?
Are we in or out of session?
Right now, we're in session, and then I recognize him to talk.
Tom, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Got a call for the question? Are you ready to vote?
I'm ready.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The record reflected was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Chairman, I, I believe that ends that part of my.
Thank you, sir. Report from Minutes Committee, Commissioner Bishop.
The Minutes Committee met in the commission room of the courthouse on May the 6th at 5:35, with four of the five-member committee present. The Minutes were unanimously approved, having no other business to come before the committee, the meeting was adjourned, and I make a motion that this report be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, reading of the Minutes?
Move to dispense with the reading of Minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I do have three things to tell you right quick, and I'll be quick with those. We have, me and Mr. Mayner have been working with FEMA on getting our money back from the March 3 tornado. They have denied one piece of it, so me and him will be working on making an appeal for that process, and it was about the, it was about the fees that they charge us to dump, and without making a long story out of it, the people that read the review, she said, just look at the portal and see what's there, they don't know the full details. We actually have a pretty good deal, if you know, to dump our trash at Smith County, which is a pretty decent price, and when we made this agreement with the third-party provider about taking our debris to them, we put that price in. When they got to realizing what they were taking, they said, hey, look, we can't make that deal there, so we had the third-party prevent to, to contract out or bid out three prices, and we've got a price there, and they were just looking at our old price compared to the new price, that was the average, and that's why I think we denied it, so we will make a, an appeal to Ms. Kelly in the next few days and see if we can get all of our money that we requested. Tomorrow, the 18th and the 19th will be our first set of budget reviews here, a budget hearing in this room here at 6 o'clock, invite all of you to come, the Budget Committee will meet and accept everybody's status quo budgets and listen to needs requests tomorrow night. We get them all done on the 18th, we don't have to come back at 19th, but it may be scheduled at two different times.
We've got half and half scheduled, too.
So we got half of them on the 18th and half of them on the 19th, and then, sir?
Talking to, sir.
And then on the 24th, Dr. Wright and Michael will be here to present the Board of Education's budget. They may need, we've got two nights set, but hopefully we'll get done on the 24th. And then we'll be back, and of course, hopefully all of you have been, have received Aaron's numbers. I gave them to you last week electronically, so you could look at those and be digesting those, and of course, if you have any questions on any of them, please feel free to give us a call. I know many of you have been involved in the committee process as each one of the budgets were formed, but on June the 1st and 2nd, then we would come back and we would work on granting needs. I did have a request that once those needs are granted that night, I'll try to get you a list for those that can't come to the meeting. We invite all of you to come, but those that can't come to the meeting, I'll try to get you a list of those needs that were granted in that particular time. So June the 1st and 2nd will be when we actually grant the needs. We're only accepting them on the 18th and 19th. We'll grant them on June the 1st and 2nd, and then that will still leave the 7th, 8th, and the 10th, if you actually need to have three other budget meetings before we actually finalize our budget on the 10th. It does have to be finalized on the 10th, so we'd have a 10-day proper public notice for us to have our public hearing on the June meeting. Commissioner Glover?
Just real briefly, can you just kind of give us a little update? I know everybody's starting to get their tax, their tax information, and a lot of people's going up $100,000 from what it was and things like that.
So let me give you my version. You may not all agree with my version, but my version is, on reappraisal, the state comes in and does the reappraisal. We, we do not do that. We collect the information and we give it to the state, and they come in and they do that assessment across the county. Once they do that, then they also will look at that. So if my property actually went up $20,000, then actually I've gained that value of $20,000 overnight. I mean, that's a good thing. That $20,000 I didn't pay for. The alternative of that would be some county mayors that I've talked to, they have gone down, and so that property I paid $150,000 for is only worth $120,000 now, so they lost $30,000 overnight. So you are in a good position there. So when the people say, hey, my property went up $20,000, I'm going to have to pay more taxes, that's not really true, because the state will set a certified rate that we'll bring back to you guys, which will be lower than 254 or 251, wherever we're at, and it'll be considerably lower because our appraisal rate is pretty high right now. So that way, they should write about the same amount of dollar check that they wrote this year for their property tax unless you decide you want to raise taxes. If you do that, you got to do a public notice and a public hearing and all of that to raise taxes, so that would be something that they would know coming. So with the reappraisal, if your property went up, in my opinion, that's a pretty good thing. I gained value of my property overnight and didn't spend any money doing it, just because of the place that you live in, and your tax bill should pretty much be the same thing. Is that a good enough answer for you, Commissioner Glover?
I just started getting some calls today about it.
And I, I got one that said they were going to vote me out because it went up 25%. So I'm trying to talk to that person, but if you get those calls, please send them our way. We'll do our best to help you, but, but that, that's a short version of that. Commissioner Walker?
Will there be a committee convening in June if anybody wants to have redress on that?
And so if you do feel like that you have been overvalued, you can go to the Board of Equalization, which does start in June. Those people can call right now to the property assessor's office and schedule an appointment, and we have a board there that hears those appeals. Thank you for that. And if they don't like that appeal, they can take it to the state. But the state is who sets these appraisals, not you, not me, not Stephen Goodall, okay? Any other questions on that? Okay, I'm going to give you just a two-second, no, two minutes, review on the, the money of the, of the 28.6 that you've heard a lot of conversation about. You know, our goal right now, we, the last information I got was the interim final rule guidance, which we'll get another one, and Mr. Mayner's been looking just closely as well. Our hopes are here is to go in this kind of format, ID all the areas that we're allowed to spend those funds to begin with. So we want to get a good, solid foundation of where can we spend the funds, and then we need to look at the other pots of money that are out there. There's some state money coming to us, and it's got restrictions on what we can spend that money on. There's some broadband money out there that we could actually qualify for. There's some opioid settlement money that could possibly help us out in different areas, and there's probably two other pots of money that are coming that we need to look at and make sure we know where is all the money coming from. And then I think we need to go back and then try to identify, what are our needs? What needs that we have in the county, short and long-term, that can be met by any of these pots of money first? Because if they're specific to that state money, for example, there are going to be restrictions on that this time if we do get it, so we want to make sure that we line those up. If there's some things that can be done through the broadband or some things that can be done through opioid, let's knock those out and line those up together before we go start looking at the 28.6 or even our growth money. So we're going to try to bring those, all of that puzzle to the Budget Committee in a workshop and invite all the commissioners, and let the Budget Committee kind of be the steering committee for this. Now, there have been lots of things talked about, what about doing this or what about doing that, and all of those I think you can bring to the table, to the Budget Committee, and then they can decide, hey, yeah, let's set a separate committee up, or no, we have enough county needs here. But I think that will be what we will spend some time on, but as I cautioned, or as they cautioned us and said this at our meeting that the comptroller brought here, don't be in a hurry to do this, because if you do it wrong, you'll take local tax dollars and pay the U.S. Treasury back, okay? And so I think we just want to take our time, but we need to be smart and work this process, I think, with the rest of the pots of money that are there. I'm going to give you just six, seven things right quick. The funds can be drawn down now, and Mr. Mayner will be doing that at some point soon. 12 months later, we'll draw down the rest of the money, okay? But he will draw that down. He will put it in the appropriate account that is supplied for by the comptroller's office. We will have until December 31st of 2024 to obligate the funds. Not spend them all, but obligate them, okay? Our schools, of course, will have the same. They'll have some money as well. They will have the September 30th of 2024 to obligate their funds, and they are in charge of those funds, not us, and so they will decide where those go. The comptroller, again, encouraged us to not spend any funds until we know for sure where they're going and to get those items approved. The expenditures are asking us to see and make sure that we do a one-time expenditure and not anything that's revolving. The funds that, if we were to look back, we could not go back and fund anything that didn't happen, that happened before March the 3rd, 2021. That was when this bill was approved. So anything before that that would qualify would have to be done after that particular time. Things that it cannot be spent for, pay the principal or interest, replenish any rainy day funds, or put in a pension for a long-term or short-term debt, or any tax anticipation notes. The amount of money that was given to the county, and I'll start with Watertown at $410,000, Lebanon at $9.78 million, Mountain Juliet at $9.93 million, Wilson County Schools got $12,554,300, I mean, $39,000. Lebanon Special got $4,876,525, and Wilson County got $28.6 million. And I only say that because since we all have money that we're doing, we definitely want to converse with them and find out what are they doing, so we don't do that, as well as what the state will spend their money on, because they will do some things as well. These funds, if they're not spent, will go back to the federal government, and as I said, obligated by 2024, yeah, no, obligated by, yeah, 2024. If you give that money to a particular project to be built or constructed, they will actually have until December 31st of 2026 to actually compete, complete the project. We will have to account for every dime that we spend and how we spend it, and that is another part of the process. And that's a short version. We're spending quite a bit of time and actually go into two more training sessions on what is actually out there that we can and can't do, but we'll come back and give you education. We'll try to go as slow as possible to make sure that we do it right. Any questions on anything that I just mentioned to you? Seeing none, I'll move forward. Any additions to be added to the notary list?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Ag extension? You are to elect three members to the ag extension committee to serve a two-year term. Mr. Lucas Holman, the extension director, has recommended the following people to you: Commissioner Mike Kurtz, Ms. Melinda Forbes, and Mr. Raymond Burns. There was a letter here presented in your packet. Do I hear a motion for those or other comments?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? On the beer board, you are to elect five members to serve a two-year term on the beer board. I'd like to recommend for your consideration, Ms. Sherri Hyder, Mr. Wayne Beadle, Mr. Ken Davis, Mr. Alan Major, and Mr. Jay Watt.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Health and Education Facility Board, there are three members here. You are to elect to serve a six-year term on this board. I would like to recommend for your consideration, Ms. Veronica Bender, Ms. Dale Gibson, and Mr. John Brightshaw.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And last would be, you are to confirm my appointment of the county medical examiner to serve a five-year term. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Mr. Dr. Scott Giles, based on a recommendation from the Wilson County Medical Society. This really should have been done last June 2020. That is my fault, because it just kind of slipped through our, with everything going on, it slipped there, but we did ask the medical society to give us their recommendation. They met and gave this to us, so that is my recommendation to you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover?
EMA met Tuesday, the 20th of April. Wilson County Sheriff's Department, the minutes are not in the packet.
We'll get them next time.
We'll move it next month.
Okay. Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper.
In your packet, you can see here our call volume numbers. As far as EMA activities, as the mayor said, we're still messing with the tornado declaration, still involved in the pandemic declaration, and we just got the severe weather flooding declaration, so we're still messing with all three of those on a daily basis. You also have two handouts that I left on your desk with the latest numbers. These are from Friday. Total active cases we have is 194, and then to the right of all that is state numbers. Total vaccinated, 35.37% at 93,658 population. State, 31.4% is where they're at in vaccinations. On the county data snapshot, Wilson County has averaged 15.8 new cases reported per day, so that's a tremendous decrease from what it was. And then lastly, over the last seven days, the average percent positive was 6.3, so that's going down also. So as a county, we're getting in pretty good shape for that. Between now and end of the month, the vaccination pod at College Hills will probably close and be relocated. The health department and EMA's been working with the school system to where vaccinations will be given over there, since our numbers, even on vaccinations, have decreased tremendously. So the SO and us and EMS will be relieved of their obligations, if you will, for the pod, and, and then they'll have somebody over at the school system. Now, with the flooding being said, they're going to, this is federal level, they're going to open up a multi-agency resource, a recovery center instead of a DRC. That will house federal, state, local resources for anybody wanting to file for flood damages. Currently, there's already quite a few applicants already in the system, but this will give them a physical place to go, and right now, that's from the 22nd of this month through the 28th. They're going to do it on a week-by-week basis and see how many they have coming, so we'll get that message out as well. Other than that, that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would like to add one thing. Thank you, Director Cooper, for that. The, the tax deadline for flood victims has been postponed to a later date, and I sent you information of that in your packet in case you want to tell anybody, and if you want the hospital or the health department to come to a group of people that you know or a workplace, they will come to you to do vaccinations, and so if you have any of that need out there, please let us know, and we'll hook you up on that. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, joint with Public Works, Commissioner Rich?
The Law Enforcement Committee met on April the 20th, the sheriff's training room. Minutes in your packet, Max should need to be receiving, filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Sheriff's report, Chief Owen. Namaste.
Namaste.
We're the only two that know that problem.
We do. Good evening, Commissioners. We have a long time deputy that works with us. He's the court officer, David Bates, and over this past weekend, he suddenly tragically lost his son. I don't have the words for what it would be like to lose a child. Sheriff Brian's not here. He was a close friend of his family, and they've asked for him to be with in this afternoon and evening, so that's where he's at. I think it's appropriate if, if and when you hit your knees tonight, would you please keep our brother in your thoughts and prayers? I mean, it's, it's just tragic. Okay. Reports in your packet. Just a couple of quick things. Calls are down a little bit, which is good. Ice jail population's been 468 this past month, which is, it's overcrowded. As of today, it's down to 424, which is good. Our jail administrator, he's working diligently to get things moving and moving around. The jail construction is going good. They're ahead of schedule. Hope it stays that way. Commissioner Gentry, several months ago when I was here, you asked me a question, and it was about alternative sentencing, and I'm pretty sure I overlaid your answer because I don't even remember what I, what I answered, okay? But it's bothered me, so I've talked with the sheriff, and we've taken a look at a few things that are going on, and I want to try to answer that for you tonight. I believe Commissioner Ash can probably help me with this more and probably will have better information, but it appears like what they're working on down in state legislation, TDOC, is getting closer to creating a community-based incarceration alternatives, which are going to be drug treatment and mental health programs. I think these are moving along pretty well. There's going to be, as always, a few things that are, that are going to stand in the way, but a push for a path to recovery is what they're looking for, because we have a raging problem, according to state government, with mental health and substance abuse. So talking with the sheriff, I told him I didn't answer your question and it concerned me, so help me answer your question, so he did. We are going to look at some programs, and we're going to implement some programs. I feel this is going to happen, but it's not going to happen until we get this new facility completed. Then we will have the manpower in order to do and step out of the box and do some programs that we need to do, and I believe that will happen, okay?
I appreciate that.
Yes or no? I apologize for not having an answer for you last time. One last thing, if I may. Several months ago, I think you all have decided that we needed a deputy for our convenience centers, and we have one, and been working for a couple of months now, and she's been working hand-in-hand with Director Lynch out there. I've been tasked with this, and she reports directly to me. Wanted to get it, give it a couple of months to see how things are going to work out and see what the problems were. So as of yesterday, I developed a standard operating procedure for the sheriff. He likes it. And we're going to put something together in the packet next month that shows the activity. Citations, warnings, illegal dumping, contacts with different people and so forth. So we'll have a report for you next month of how that's going. Are there any questions?
Your motion to approve report?
Second.
And any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff, Chief Owen. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford.
Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners, the Education Committee met on Thursday, May the 6th, in the meeting room of the commission office. If there are no questions, I move these minutes be received and filed.
Okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Director of Schools report, Dr. Donna Wright. Not your last meeting, though. You got one more.
I've got one more.
There we go. That's what I thought.
I don't know if you heard that question. You want to know if this is my last meeting? No, I have one more. Or as my husband tells me, I've got six Mondays left, whatever that means.
You're not counting, are you?
I'm not. He is. He is. You have a packet of information. Some of it's somewhat dated simply because of when we meet and this information's compiled. But just some notes of things that I want to just address and touch on. If you look on your second page or would be on the back page of what you have on updates on the schools, we did come to an arrangement. We sort of touched on this last time, didn't go into detail, but that process has been completed. We have started the demolition process, and where we had dated here, that probably wouldn't see target dates until July 15th for Stoner Creek and August for West Wilson Middle School. We are now looking at possibly at the end of this week, the process starting as far as looking at demolition. The company out of Carrollton, Georgia, has did a walkthrough through the properties today. And so we're very encouraged because every, every day that we're delayed is that much longer getting the work done as far as getting those schools constructed. So that was very, very encouraging and hopeful that we'll get that moving. The other thing that I want to touch on as far as our Bobcat Village, we have, we are having to make some adjustments as far as looking at how we arrange until we get the two properties rebuilt. And so because right now we're using Mount Juliet Middle School for K-5 and then the sixth grade from two middle schools, and then the seventh and eighth grades right now are at the two high schools. We are growing, and so we're going to have to make accommodations to make that work. So we have, we were able to compile the funds as far as to create a temporary complex, K-5 for Stoner Creek, in front of where is what is now known as the Robinson Gymnasium. It was one of the structures that withstood the tornado. And so I think some of you have even seen some of the film footage we had on that as it swept through and then it came back around. And there was minimal, minimal damage to that structure. So we will create a complex there that with 20 brand-new units that are essentially two classrooms with our own restroom facilities in it to get us through till Stoner Creek is completed and they can transition into that simply because we've got to move the sixth and seventh grade into Mount Juliet Middle School, just keep the eighth grade at the high school because our middle school numbers right now, we're seeing classrooms of 30 to 35 and four classrooms right now of 36 students. And we are continuing to enroll. It doesn't seem to be a deterrent in any way where people are locating. And they're, I guess, as one family said, they know they're going to be looking at new schools in the next couple of years. The thing, why I'm bringing this up, if you keep up with the national news right now, there is a constraint with building materials, construction materials, delivery of construction materials, a lack of truck drivers that can transport the materials. And so this company has put us on high priority. They are telling us they're going to try to hit as far as at least mid-August, but they can't promise because they have no control of how this market works. And so with, as any good planner, we have to have a contingency plan. And the contingency plan being, you know, Wendell Marlowe will know this very well as far as the 800 wing or what was known as the sixth-grade wing was also a structure that was not damaged by the tornado. If you're looking at West Wilson Middle School, you see that structure as far as from the road, and it's horrendous. But to, if you're facing it, but if you look over to the left on the back, it was constructed, I believe, 2012, Wendell. So it's fairly new. So you can see the difference just even in construction on how it withstood. And we've had air conditioning and heat going on in there since last July. We did the summer cleanup as far as what we would do is with any preparation and have kept it well-maintained. In fact, it's somewhat pristine. We had a couple of rascals that got in it, though, and when I'm saying rascals, some kids that thought they'd be fun with, have some fun with some fire extinguishers. And so we've taken care of that. But all that to say, there's enough room in there that we can do a temporary placement of the K-5 until we can get that Bobcat Village completed, particularly with all the infrastructure. We're doing the utilities, all of that as well. Again, funding, that was part of our insurance settlement. And why we're doing it that way, because, well, we want to keep the transition as minimal as possible, that when we move as far as into the West Wilson complex, we can move right up the hill into the village. And that way, we do not have to disrupt the classrooms as far as when we move the sixth and seventh grade into Mount Juliet Middle School and keep the eighth grade at the two high schools. Because every transition that we can minimize makes a difference as far as teachers getting settled in their classrooms. So I just wanted to give you an update on that as far as the contingency plan. Just a comment as far as what was referenced by the mayor. Our federal dollars are somewhat different as far as how we are receiving them and with different contingencies. ESER is the acronym for ours. It's the Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And the 12.9 million that the mayor's references is ESER III. And there are a lot of strings attached to it. 20% of it has to be dedicated to learning loss. And the state has to approve what we use, and they are very, they've already, for some districts right now, have made a point that they're not going to accept what they are determining as learning loss. And every district's going to be different. So with that, we are working diligently as far as how we will dedicate that money because it has, it's for non-recurring use. And that's something that, for those of you who've been around for a long time, if you can remember back into the mid-2000s when the era dollars were out, a lot of school districts got in trouble because they tried to balance budgets and they hired personnel. And when those dollars ran out, they had to let a lot of people off. And so there were some issues there. But again, we've had committees, we're working on that. The ESER I that came out last spring is what helped us for the transition with the tornadoes. We lost about 2,000 devices with the loss of those two schools, which became really important for transitioning to remote and virtual learning. And then ESER II, which was a little bit over $5 million, has been dedicated as far as looking at, again, learning materials and things that we're going to need for school. I say all that, that you, if you're listening to the news, Metro, for example, received an ESER III, and they're looking at total almost half a billion dollars. Shelby a little bit more than that. And so Williamson and Wilson has probably got the least amount comparable by size and school population as well as our ability to pay. And that's based on free and reduced lunch as far as poverty level. And that's not a complaint. We are thrilled for the amount that we've received. But comparable, Trousdale, Murfreesboro City Schools, many of them received more than we did. And so when we've been asked as far as the amount of money, we are grateful and we are thankful, but it's not comparable to surrounding districts and want to make a note of that. Good news, and I'll be quiet here, we'd be hot off the press. There was $30 million that was available through the state for reimagining high school, innovative high school grant. And they received about 65 applications. 21 were rewarded, were awarded, not rewarded to. And we received word that we were, we received a grant of $759,000 today as far as to make our dream come true as far as an early college model that works with not only that CTE path but also partnering with industry partners and where they can literally, students can graduate high school but also with a two-year associate's degree and/or industry certification in a field. So that's out today, and we're really thrilled to have that. And barring no questions, that completes my report tonight.
Report be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Gentry.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I was going to be disappointed.
The money you just talked about, the grant, is that a one-time grant?
What was received today?
Yes.
Yes, out of a $30 million pot.
Right, I understand. And if we start a program, can we continue it on money in the future that we, we collect? Is that what your plan is?
The plan is, the, what we submitted as far as that early college plan, it's one of those that not only is it a real return on investment, it's embedded within existing school programming, except we have the ability now with state permission to go beyond what's required and have a partnership with higher ed, industry, and be able to cobble that together. So it's a little more detailed and complex, but it's-
Is it just a one-year activity?
No, it's ongoing.
Okay, so it'll cost you more in the future to continue?
Yes.
Okay. Another question on the school, were you going to use the one that was not damaged? How many classrooms are we looking at there?
Which, as far as the extension at West Wilson Middle School?
Middle School, yeah. Where the-
Yes, there's 26, 27 classrooms with a pretty good gallery, white halls, restroom facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vedada?
Yes, Dr. Wright, another program going now in Wilson County called Wilson Works. Will this program be able to work with that?
Well, we have several members that even sit and work with Wilson Works. It could be a collaborative partner, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they could eventually maybe help maintain that program and raise funds to help it go forward?
Yes, but the thing, but once we build it into the model that we're working with, and again, this was part of our application, that it becomes part of the programming and it will receive state funding ongoing that goes beyond the grant.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright.
Thank you.
Report Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee met May 4th at 5:00 PM here at the courthouse. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Act Center Management Report, Commissioner Scruggs.
April 20 was, was in your packet, and Commissioner Jones asked me earlier on April the 27th, could we postpone those since they were not in the packet and didn't get a chance to be read? So I'm, I'm good with that. If you are, you just need to make the motion on the 20th, and we'll get those approved, and we'll defer the other ones under your direction. So you have a motion to approve those that are on the 20th?
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And I hear a motion to defer those to be, do I have to defer that, Mike? We ain't got to do anything. Mike said we're good. It wasn't in the packet, yes.
I need to speak to that before we end tonight. Commissioner McFarland and others have tasked me with that.
Okay. Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
Animal Control met in regular session on Thursday, May the 6th. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Cable tax, Commissioner Walker.
No report.
Developing tourism, Commissioner Vedada.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Ash. Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met here in the courthouse on April 22nd. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second. Got a motion to second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Health and Recreation, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
You'll have one?
Oh, there's one.
Give me something in here.
It's so long ago. April 19.
April 19, 6:45.
Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Insurance, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
Judicial met on April 22nd at 5:00 PM in upstairs conference room. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Mr. Chairman, planning and zoning met on May the 4th, 6:00 PM, again on May 11th at 6:00 PM. May 4th is in the packet. I did not see May 11th, but I asked to approve the ones that are in the-
Second.
So the ones on May the 4th are the ones you're approving? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We did have a motion to second on that, correct?
Yep.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Weathers. And rules, Commissioner Gentry.
Rules Committee met on the May 11th, and the minutes will be in the next month's package.
Thank you, sir. Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs. Any discussion? Commissioner McFarland.
Mr. Chairman, can the county attorney address the issue that we discussed?
You want me to do that now?
We're-
I'll be glad to.
Through the committee, sir.
I think I will. Rules Committee and planning and zoning met by Monday night, and the concern at the Rules Committee was the possibility of amending or modifying some of our rules simply because we're getting so many things laid on our desk, on your desk, on Monday night of the county commission meeting, and you don't have a chance to see it. I argued against changing the rules, and frankly, I said, we just need to have better discipline out of all of us. We know that we meet the third Monday of every month. Packet goes out the second Monday. If you've got something you want to be considered, have it to me or Sandra by the second Monday, by noon preferably, or the, the week before the packet goes out. We're trying to cut down on some of these things that you get and have to vote, or asked to vote on, and you've just seen them 10 minutes before the meeting starts. So the solution was hopefully y'all will discipline yourselves to do that and your committees. And then if not, and if it's on the desk, most likely somebody will make a motion to defer it to the next meeting. So you're not really gaining anything by bringing it up 10, 15 minutes before the meeting starts. There, it's just one of those things I, I can understand. You're going to be asked to vote on it, you need to be able to read it before you're asked to vote on it. That's what, did I summarize that pretty accurately?
You did. You gave the nice version of it, and my version was, not in the packet, we shouldn't consider it, figure.
Well, you know how large it is, are we need to talk a little more.
Commissioner Patton, anything?
Well, you know, it's nice to tell us that, tell us that, but some of these are departments that send us stuff that, you know, we make questions. So could we also send notification to departments if they, you know, for information, to send it to the committees or wherever that it needs to go to?
And I could, I can address that a little bit. I do have, you do have people that like, that turn in reports to you that just want you to know stuff. It's not required by our rules. They're just giving you information, and they feel like it's a chance where they can catch everybody at one time and pass it out. So that's what they do. We're not talking about stopping that, are we? I mean, this is just information. So as long as it's information, but I will, we'll send one out tomorrow to cover what you just said, that if they want anything to be considered, they need to get it to Mike and Sandra before, the Monday before. We can do that.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Ash.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with that, but there are times.
Yep.
And there are that rise to the level of emergency, you'll just think they take consideration. I would think you could probably, the county attorney, get it over before they get here if that needs to be.
We talked to that, about that, Mr. Ash, and I'll tell you, I haven't mentioned this in a long time, but the late Commissioner Ralph Ants succeeded when a lot of the commissioners in the jury box put together a resolution one night unbeknownst to me that said anything that came in after the packet, the county attorney had to declare it an emergency. That made me real popular with some people where I said, this is, so I just assumed y'all get them in early and I don't have to mention it. That resolution's still in effect, and I don't want to have to deal with it. But if you tell me, y'all will remember it. So I said there are times when it- There were.
Any other questions and discussion on the Urban Type Facility Board minutes? Any other questions and discussion on the Urban Type Facility Board minutes? That's where we started talking this discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Finance Director's report?
I know. No, no, that was good. It was just discussion.
Mr. Maynard.
Thought you were going to skip me for a second there, which is good, would have been good with everybody. The finance report's in your packet. For those of you who didn't come to the Budget Committee meeting, budgeted property tax, we've already received over 101% of budgeted revenues for the year. Sales tax, I'll point that out for you real quick, how well that's going. In the special purpose tax fund, you're at 102% of what you budgeted 10 months into the year. And in the Rural Debt Service Fund, you are at 156, or 166, hold on just a minute, adjust my glasses slightly, 166%. And a lot of that has to do with that internet sales now going to the locality where the sale actually takes place. So if the sale takes place in the rural part of the county and not inside a municipality, we're now collecting those taxes. So that's a positive for us. Advocate facilities taxes over and above what it was last year. Commissioner Smith asked me to be brief. I'm going to try really hard. But I do have, I just want to say that as Commissioner Ash and then County Attorney Jennings said, I know you don't like stuff winding up on your desk the night of, and I know why, and it makes sense, but you realize you only meet every 30 days, you know? And if there's a budget amendment that needs to be done, and they don't realize it, they don't know that something's going to happen, they are stuck for 30 days. And that's a long time to wait. And I see the, who cares? I know. But these people have to operate. They have to operate. So I understand you don't like it on your desk the night of, and, but if it's something pretty simple and nothing earth-shattering, I wish we had something special for that. Other than that, I will tell you that if you go into the U.S. Treasury, if you simply type in American Rescue Plan Treasury Regulations, you'll go to right there. The interim final rule adopted by Treasury on May 10th of 2021. It's 134 pages. It's written in English. I'm about halfway through it. So we're working on that. It's probably never been between what the mayor was talking about, with the American Rescue Plan, the money coming from the state, the implementation of GASB-87, which makes every lease that the county enters into an asset and a debt instrument, and a number of other things. There's probably never been a more challenging time that I remember in my career to, to work in this area. And we've seen a lot. We've seen the Affordable Care Act, several major tax law changes. There's a lot flying that is fast and furious. So I ask for your patience as we work our way through this. And that concludes my report.
Motion to be received and filed.
Second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met in regular session Thursday, May the 6th. County Commission meeting room. Minutes are in your packet. Move to be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions? Vote on them all at once?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. I should have said that, yeah.
Resolution 21-5-7, binding two auxiliary judicial commissioner positions into a one full-time judicial commissioner position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Mr. Robinson?
What's your?
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes. Please continue.
Resolution 21-5-8, authorizing part-time judicial commissioners to work 110 hours each per calendar month.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Weathers?
What's your vote?
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-5-9, to reflect revenues received concerning homeland security. These are received, but not included in the original budget for 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriations resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Stafford?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Must be that area back there. Oh, please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-5-10, reflect revenues received concerning surplus sales, but not included in the original budget for 2021 fiscal year, and to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an additional appropriation into WEMA.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-5-11, amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from the Capital Projects Fund to PEG Studio.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Commissioner Gentry.
Yeah, I was wondering, this would be a possible expenditure for the COVID fund since it would eliminate some of the people inside the room here. I mean-
So far that I've discussed, so far what I've looked at, the answer would be no. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25, yes, zero, no, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-5-12, to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from the County Clerk Data Fees Reserve Fund to County Clerk.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Keith? All hearts and minds good? Please record.
25-0.
25-0.
Resolution 21-5-13, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for 2021 fiscal year to make an appropriation from the General Fund to Animal Control.
Motion.
Discussion? Commissioner Fields?
Yes, I understand that this $10,000 was to repair the existing building, but with the money that we're going to be receiving, would we not be better off to just use some of that 28.6 million that we're going to receive and build a new facility for animal control versus spending 10 to do a little patch-up work?
28.6 is, Mr. Gentry was asking a while ago, they don't, we wouldn't, I don't think that would qualify either. There are specific instructions for this, building new buildings and just doing what you want to with it does not exist in this area, but expanding for animal control would-
I thought it would.
Yeah.
If you social distance the animals, it'll work.
You're going to social distance animals? And, and, and-
Motion.
And let's go, let's go, let's go a step further with that question too, though. They are looking to build a new building. That would be a 12-month process anyway, and what she's got right now would be, I mean, I mean, it's 12 months away at least if we were to start construction tomorrow. So you're not going to do that because you got to find land and everything else. So we're in that process, so you're looking probably two years away before you do a new building anyway, to be honest with you.
And another thing is, is that this is a county facility, and even if animal control wasn't going to be using it, somebody else would, and these, these things need to be repaired anyway.
Good, good question. Any others? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25, yes, zero, no, resolution passes.
Resolution 21-5-14, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2021 fiscal year by approving Wilson County Board of Education General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment 2109.
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Scruggs? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25-0.
25-0, resolution passes.
A, Resolution 21-5-15, approving a transfer of funds from the General Purpose School Fund to the Federal Projects Funds for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021.
Motion.
I got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Oh, one, Tommy. What's your?
Commissioner Jones?
It's, it's, it's over there on that row. I'm going to guess it's going to be Commissioner Dowell next. I don't know.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes. And Mayor Jennings, you speak to the 16 here, please.
Yeah, you'll notice your resolutions go from 15 to 17. There's one here, number 16, but that is back to the one the school system adopted that is the predecessor to 15. You approve it and send it over here. So you've already voted on it. You're ready for 17.
Okay.
Finish that inside.
Resolution 21-5-17, to establish inspection fees to the planning process.
Motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote.
Okay, the end is near.
Mr. Dowell?
Same row.
That same old row. All hearts and minds good?
Diane's fault.
Please record.
Is that you?
Commissioner Rich?
I vote against it in committee. I'm going to vote against it in commission. I was going to, too. I should have went on. I didn't have to be the only one.
Resolution did pass. We're ready for 18.
Resolution 21-5-18, to implement a fee for land use amendment application.
Motion.
I got a motion. Do I hear a second? I got a motion and a second now. Discussion? Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend it from one year. Down there in the second, be it further resolved, from one year down to six months.
Do you hear a second on the amendment?
I'll second that amendment.
I got a second on the amendment. Now discussion on the amendment. Anybody raise your hand if you had discussion on the amendment from one year down to six months? Seeing none, vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? At the record to reflect that the amendment was amended, so now we're back to vote on the regular resolution as amended. Any discussion now? Commissioner Weathers?
Oh, I'm through.
You're good. Any other discussion on the resolution as amended? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Thank you, sir. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25-0, resolution passes. Any old business to come before this body?
Motion adjourned.
Any new business? Or more motion? I'm sorry, Commissioner Van Aden?
I put this on everyone's desk. Please look at this. This is a great project in memory of Charlie Daniels. It's called Shepherd Smith. They do a 15-mile ruck, and I didn't know what a ruck was, but it's like a backpack, I'm told. They're going to have 83 pounds in that, and they're going to leave Charlie's grave in Mount Juliet at 9:00 on the 20th. They come to Castle Hots property, Sammy B's. And this is for veterans that commit suicide. They've been doing this project all over the U.S. So please, please show up and support this project.
We'll get it to Brooke and let her put it out for us as well. Commissioner Ash?
Also, many of y'all have bought the home sponsors, some of them put teams together for the Wilson Warriors Project. I have a kid in jury and sue, a few bone, and Mike, we appreciate that, and we still got to name another team or two open, and-
Want to put a team in there? Count on me. All right. Mr. Gentry?
And when is the licensing branch going to be open, the new building?
First of June.
First of June, okay.
Middle of June, maybe. Middle of June. I'm here now.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Any other business? Mr. McFarland?
Would it make that better, get a bomb and get it to go out?
That'd be a good question.
Get a one, get a what?
Um-
Fly them out. Probably.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you withdrawing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.